Okay, let's go ahead and call our meeting's order. And six o'clock just a few minutes after. So we really want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We certainly appreciate you being here. And thank you for being here. And we're going to have our pledge allegiance. I'm going to ask Scott, he would lead us in the pledge and I'll lead us in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I do thank you for this time together and the opportunity we have, Lord, to serve our city. And I always ask, bless this meeting tonight, this issue from this year. I always ask you to give us wisdom and courage to make decisions that we feel is best for our city. You will be asking your guidance instead of mine. Thank you for all you do for us, Lord. Thank you for being blessed that you have stole upon us. Ask you to give us where you favor, all these many favors and blessings in my life.
First item on the agenda is not to approve amendments from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those amendments?
I'm like.
Okay, may I thank you? Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, great. Can you discuss in all those minutes? All in favor, say aye. Second item is to approve of the council table bills. Is there a motion to approve those bills tonight? Okay, Francis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tim. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. One of the first things we want to do is distribute our alcohol money to our schools. At this time, I'll ask our principals to come up. We have a check for $7,780. If they all three want to come up and give it to you at the same time, then I'll just let each one of you kind of give an overview of what these funds are being for, what's going on, spinning forward. But Ms. Hall, we welcome you here at night to get your first check. And I know you're excited. First day of school today, so thank y'all for coming. We've got busy week. So we'll do this this time and I'll let each one kind of talk and see if you can manage. Got a bad battery, but people just turn around and tell us that. Thanks, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
So if you want. I think that might have a bad battery. If you just want my discount, say what you have in mind. That'd be good.
You want me to go first?
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, okay. We greatly appreciate this money. I can assure you it will go to several different things. Thus far, we've spent money on computers. I think we bought 16 computers and some other computer equipment, including headphones. We bought two projectors. So we have definitely used it, you know, to benefit the children. And I know my, now you have to speak for my teachers in saying that we greatly appreciate it. Greatly.
On behalf of the middle school, I'd like to thank the city council and what you do for us. And it's always a blessing coming here and getting money. And we certainly appreciate it. We do a lot of things in the middle school and try to keep up in a very old building. And it's tough, but we do the best we can. We have spent money on computers, projectors, printers, MOs, digital cameras for the teachers, and just trying to help every classroom and every teacher that we can. We certainly thank you.
On behalf of high school, we thank you. We're like the other two schools. Same needs, the same things that we have to do. When you have, we now will have almost 500 students this year, which we will be up in enrollment, which is great. But that also adds a different twist to the amount of need that we have. I had a teacher today wanting a classroom set of novels. And when, you know, I'll tell her, I said, I'm going to City Hall tonight. We'll take care of that, you know? And that's the excitement of it. That's a good thing about it. We do appreciate you very much. It's good. I was telling Stephen, this is kind of like going to a school board meeting. The only difference is y'all give instead of taking. But thanks. Thank you very much.
So you do have plans.
Oh, yeah.
For this, I mean, sorry, spend.
Always.
Well, I thank y'all, your principals, y'all do an outstanding job. And we're blessed to have a great school system. And I, one thing I think we do the best job of, and it's not being critical, is bringing on our schools. Because we know we have excellent students. We know we have excellent teachers. And people need to know that. Because down the road, they think they got the fastest, best school in the world. But you know what? We do too. And we don't take back seats to anybody. And our students are just as good, if not better than anybody. And so is our teachers and our students. So I commend you. And that starts at the top of y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
The next item on the agenda is open. I do check the account for Highway 43 South Bridge replacement. And Jan, this would be for this bridge south of town, past Church Trust. This what this is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This is the line of credit to. No, I'm sorry. I've skipped one. It's approve a line of credit for $900,000.
Right.
For the Highway 43 South Bridge replacement. So first we need to do that. And then open.
Right.
There is or no motion to approve the line of credit for Highway 43 South Bridge replacement? So that is the.
Bye.
Bye.
We're going to approve to get a line of credit. And then you're going to.
Open.
You're going to open the bids to see who it is.
Right.
I mean, how do I vote? I don't know who it is. Okay, so.
Well, he needs to open the bids first.
Okay. You want to have a bid first? Okay. I haven't seen them either since the first time. We asked the local banks to give us a bid proposal. And First National has an opportunity to bid $900,000 in a line of credit request at a fixed rate of 1.28% for one year. And that's 1.28% from First National. The second we have is People's Trust. And. People's Trust rate is 2.84% if bank qualified and tax exempt. Scott, you'll look at these right quick, bud. Cause they're a little bit different. Jan, make sure that's correct.
What we did, what we did said, we didn't ask a question the other day about the interest. What on that? What I call about the rise of the interest of you.
What we did was we had a line of credit. And when we spent the money, well, actually the state reimbursed us. But we had it running through all our banking. And we paid the interest on that. We don't get reimbursed with that interest. So the life of that loan.
They don't get the interest?
That's right. It cost us, Jan, was about $4,000.
I'm sorry, I was going to leave.
That line of credit we had on the bridge.
How much the interest was? That was about $8,000.
About $8,000. And discussing with Alan, I think he was in agreement that doing it like we're doing it is better than using all of our funds to, you know, deplete our general fund. While that process is going on, because sometimes you may have half a million dollars out for a few months before you get reimbursed by the state. And even though it does cost us a few thousand dollars interest over the period of that loan, it was still better than using all of our own cash money to do that. Is that correct, Jan?
Well, as I got some of it, but they were talking about that they would tie up too much money. Sometimes I would have as much as $500,000 out there waiting for the state to reimburse. And talking about doing some of the things that y'all were looking at doing, capital improvement, that would not come out of bond money. But if you had it tied up in the state project, you could not.
Yes.
That was the understanding that you, Greg, and Alan didn't think it was a good idea to tie up that much money in our general fund.
So that's why the suggestion is to get a certain line of credit.
Right.
Even though we know it may cost us a little bit of interest.
That was his suggestion.
What do you think about the two bids that we just opened on?
So you need to make a recommendation to approve a line of credit for the project at First National.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve a line of credit for the project at First National, Dave? For $900,000?
I make a motion that we approve this line of credit at First National. At what was that, 1.08? Okay, $900,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
No one opposed. Just a very.
No one opposed, just abstained. Okay, is that a clear opening and checking account?
Go ahead and vote to open, because they went betting. I have to show it to them in the minutes. Go open the checking account.
Okay, is there a motion to open the checking account for this Highway Bridge replacement project?
And this is specifically just for this and not anything else?
Well, what it is also is keeping us on our odd, is keeping everything separate as far as accounting and checking goes. So it is better to do it this way.
I have to show the bank the minutes for y'all vote to open a checking account before they open a big opening checking account.
Okay.
I make a motion, wait till we open a checking account?
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Tim, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Is that it? Scott, Jan, on this particular thing?
Yeah.
All right, number four is render your certificate deposit of $4,000, $49,259, which we choose eight, twenty-one, fourteen. Jan, is this so?
It's at, right now it's at First State. And we get a copy right here. I've got three bids. So I've got one for First National, 4.5.
Yes, senior.
Yeah, senior. One from First State at 0.60, which is what it currently is.
Okay.
And then People's is 0.65. So People's has the highest rate.
Okay, People's Trust has a high rate.
And that's for a year.
At 0.65 for one year.
So you'll be voting to move that to, from First State to People's Trust.
Okay.
You said 0.
0.6.
0.65 then?
Mm-hmm.
0.65.
Yes, sir. So is there a motion to move that account to People's Trust Bank? $49,259 to People's Trust Bank at 0.65%?
I make a motion to move it.
Okay, Tim, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Francis. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Well, you can remember when it used to be three, four, five, six percent. And now it's less than 1%. In our whole business, on the next item on agenda, we do have downtown banners for $1,900 for a set. And there's two questions about what the $1,900 covers. I could get Kimmy to come next minute if you want me to. We did discuss this previously. We went back in the minutes and found where it was discussed failfully. And Frank did make a suggestion that we do purchase a set of banners. But we never voted. And that's the reason we kind of, because she had asked about it. I think she called and talked to Jan, was we still interested in buying a set of banners? One is that, I can't remember if that's how many polls or if that's just for each season?
I understood that it was for all the polls. And it was the hardware and everything that went with it to put it up. Did you, is that not what you understood? Or?
I don't think it's.
The hard poll.
It's hard work, isn't it?
Well, it's harder than days.
Well, they don't.
Why don't we just get her to come?
You think it's all seasons?
I think it's one for each season.
No, for all.
No.
For all, every poll.
It's mine, I'm saying.
I thought it was a full package.
Well, that thing is confusing, because there's some people who sponsor each poll. There's already some who's bought a poll, you know, packaged as for each season. So it couldn't be forever. Let's just put that off and later come back. Because I think she can explain and we can vote on it. I think my lady's, you know, against it. We just need better explanation. Okay, let's just hold off on that and go to number two, which is a final report on environmental study of the most somewhere. Bill and Kurt called me this morning and said the environmental was complete. And he was going to bring you. What's your name?
Jan.
Bring you with you and explain the study is completed. We're glad it is completed. So we're just going to let you come up front and then give us your report.
Your side. How do you know that we're going to give it?
Thank y'all for letting me share. We went out and it did take us two trips to complete the study because basically we both had us two trips to come in to be able to find all the areas that needed to be evaluated. And basically to do an adequate evaluation of this site, we needed to look at ponds that were on the site that may have contained waste, some ditches that carried wastewater at one time to those ponds, and groundwater that might have been impacted by materials that were handled at the site. And then we also looked at the soils on the site. And since it was such a large facility, about 48 to 49 acres there, it was a pretty doggy task. But what we did is we went out with an X-ray fluorescence instrument that analyzes for metals. And one of the things that was in the waste stream would be metals at your site. And so we used the screening instrument to help us identify those areas where there was contamination. And we put in 59 different samples. And the good news is that only a very few of those areas tested above the screening levels that have been established by EPA and the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. So that was, that was fantastic news. What we really had was one area on the east side of the facility, I believe, close to the raised concrete area, where we found some arsenic levels that were about 10 times the screening levels. And I don't know whether y'all know, but many times back, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, and even further back than that, we used our cennacles as an herbicide to try to keep down weeds. So we really kind of attribute the, you know, arsenic there to trying to control weeds around the facility and around the parking lot. So that was not unusual to find that, because that's very, very commonly found when we do environmental studies. So the nice thing about that is it is in a limited area. So utilization of the site won't be very hampered by that. We'd just have to remove a little bit of soil. Or we would have to possibly put it under a parking lot. That is one way that you cap the material and prevent people from coming in direct contact with something that had elevated arsenic. So that was one of the things that was good news when we completed the study. We did find out that some of the waste that had come from the facility contained elevated concentrations of chromium. And evidently that was in the dye. And when we went to, the way the facility was set up, you had wastewater that came from the, you know, the dying parts that went through a sewer system and then some open ditches. And then they went into a pond that eventually went to the second pond that was at the site. And so what happened was when we looked at the sludge that was in the bottom of the pond that collected wastewater first, the sludge in the bottom of that pond contained elevated concentrations of chromium that it classified as a hazardous waste. And so that material will have to be properly disposed of. One of the good things that we found out when we talked with Ada is that there is the possibility that we can get a permit to. The water does not appear to be contaminated at a level that is an issue. And so it appears that we may be able to apply for a permit that would allow the water to be discharged either to, you know, possibly the back part of the United States or. We might be able to pump the water there to dewater the ponds. And then it would give us a way to manage that waste at a much lower volume. And it would be much more cost effective. So that's one of the things that is good news. We did find in the area of the ditches that at one time were used to just openly lead the wastewater to the pond, there were some elevated concentrations in those ditches. But fortunately, they were not higher than the screening values that EPA and Ada has set. And basically, they were half that concentration. So, you know, if you want to be very proactive, when we remove some of the piping and the building comes down, obviously that's something that you have to be very careful when you manage, because you would not want to contaminate your ice cream shop with those kinds of things. And so removing a small amount of soil from those ditches is something that would be highly recommended, just because it helps protect, you know, the integrity of the site that you've got and protect all that. Those 44 acres of relatively clean property. One of the other things that we found out was that there were four monitoring wells on the site. And the first three, we didn't have any kids of a metal contaminant that would have been a problem based on the screening days that have been established by Ada. But the one that is to the east wastewater ponds did show some elevated concentrations of both arsenic and lead. And, you know, we would go back and say, oh, that arsenic has probably come from trying to keep down weeds around those parking areas or around the fringes of the facility. So that is not that surprising. It would probably get you into the category where you might have to do some longer term monitoring of that one well that seems to be a problem. And so basically, I guess the largest issue that you have at the site is going to be this one that is in pond number two. And what we do know is that the ponds were not initially lined. Those liners came in at about the 90s. And so we were afraid, particularly after we found that there was some hazardous material in these luges, we felt like it was not appropriate to pierce those liners until we could manage the waste in a better kind of way. So I can't give you the volume tonight, because I don't know exactly what is under the liner. But I do know that you have two options as far as how you would manage those wastes. One of them, you can suck up that waste and you can take it off-site and you can send it to a disposal facility. And we can help you develop a closure plan for those ponds if you want to take it off-site. The second option is to actually treat that material in place. And that is a, a lot of people like to be able to say, you know, as long as I can render this material to where it is no longer a risk for direct contact, to actually manage that without trucking and going into a landfill, which when then you are co-mingled with the waste of a lot of other more difficult and probably more contaminated facilities. A lot of people like to keep their waste on-site. And another advantage to that option is if you stabilize that material in place, you can eliminate the risk if we can, you know, put that plan to Ada and get their approval. But it also would help you get started in filling those ponds, which are a bit of a physical hazard anyway. You know, children or trespassers could go in there and get into those ponds. So to come back and fill them is probably something that in your long-term goal, you would want to come back and fill those ponds and make sure that we have stabilized that material. So we have two basic options on how to handle the waste. And right now, I have had some discussions with Ada. Because this was once an active regulated facility, those people seem to be comfortable with talking with us about how to address the issues with your facility in place. And then you had started on the brownfields program and done some work with those folks. And I haven't had quite as much positive feedback from them. I think they're really busy right now. But, you know, that is another option, but it may be a more expensive one. So our recommendation is that at this point is, I mean, the next step to move forward is to say, okay, let's come in and let's put across both of these options. What would it take to, you know, how much volume do we have? Let's go get more particulars. So we could basically, what we call, develop your alternatives for cleanup and, you know, provide you with a report. So you can say, oh, I can take it off-site for this amount, or I can stabilize it in place, or if I go with this program, or if I go with another, you know, what would be the cost to the city and properly managing that site so that you can move forward with the redevelopment?
Any other work can we do? Has to be all hired, somebody to do everything, or is it like dirt or something? If they were moved, is that something we can do? Or has to be?
For some of the materials that are there, to be able to work with them, you know, it's like I am. I'm a hazardous waste worker. And I have training and I have credentials that allow me to do that work. For people that, for the sludges that are in the pond, it is a hazardous waste. And it has to go to an approved facility. And it has to go to be hauled by people that are specialized in handling waste. So it is a little bit more expensive. And that's one of the reasons why, you know, we want to develop for you basically your cleanup alternatives. You know, what can we do to help you identify what this cost would be? It probably, cradle to grave, if we were to start with that report, it probably would take several weeks to complete the report. And then the process of providing for the cleanup might take as much as six months to get the permit and resolve everything with Ada so that the work can be done. So, you know, it's going to take a little bit of time. And it will, either way, it will be a process that you'll have to have some regulatory approval on. And you would have to have people that were qualified to do the work.
If we treat it and stabilize it in place, when would you test what's under the liner? Or would you just howl what's underneath the address if we treat and stabilize in place?
Basically, what we would hope to do is once we get a buy-in from our Ada and they said, okay, you know, we either don't like the idea of you using one of these processes. And there are a number of different chemicals that can do that. If they are accepting of that, when we go in and treat what is inside the liner itself, we would want to be able to determine, come in at an angle or do something to go ahead and pierce those stones, knowing that we're almost ready to go with it. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to open the candle up and let it sit there for two weeks before you have dinner. So, you know, we really want to be able to come up with some ways to go about it, see how the regulatory folks feel about that option, and then give you a real volume so that we can go do all of it at one time. Because mobilizing with equipment and specialized personnel to do that kind of work is expensive and we would not want you to have to do that twice.
Would just delay any kind of procedures to develop the property? Waiting till this is completely done? Or it could just be part of the demolition if that is done?
I think it could be part of that program. And really, depending on what you're wanting to do. I know that you want to take the buildings down. And as far as the building goes, the only thing that we found inside the building that would be a concern is those areas that actually, or the sewer lines that would have gone from the dying area to those ponds. So it's a very, very limited area that would be a problem. It's quite normal for us to work with those that are trying to redevelop a property at the same time we're doing environmental cleanup. So I think that's a very doable option. And the ponds are in the rear, unless you intend to do construction on top of those ponds, you know, in a very short timeframe. Obviously, we would be able to come up with a remedy and work with Ada to help you establish the way you're going to go.
We get a copy of your report?
I have two for you.
Okay.
And I went ahead and brought those tonight. I had had a better opportunity. If I hadn't been in the hazardous waste site, I would have bought you more.
We can make copies.
Okay.
So each one can have. Would you say? Kurt, is anything you had to what, what they've said this far? Any questions somebody have for?
Uh, no, just that, uh, I think combining it all into, you know, taking the building down and handling the waste all at one time would be the way to put it in one package would be the way to go. And hopefully, we can get that accomplished within the six-month timeframe to get it all happening at the same time.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to make a recommendation for our substitute prosecutor. Uh, from time to time, we need a substitute prosecutor. Not very often, I think Molly said, once in the last several years that she's had to have one. And, uh, it's been recommended that we use Lonnie Spain. He is a local attorney here in Hamilton. And so the suggestion would be to hire Lonnie. It's at one hundred and fifty dollars an hour when needed. But Scott can tell you, he is our prosecutor. And not very often, unless it's some type of conflict, that you even have to have another prosecutor. Uh, so just to kind of be on standby in case we did need one. Sir, would there be some, um, recommendations to approve what's been suggested?
There have been others.
Yes.
Uh, I have spoken to. I make a motion that we hire Lonnie as a backup prosecutor.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Hall and Fair, say aye. Number four is to appoint Joey Stups, the Rec Center Board for a term, a four-year term. Uh, he's served and, uh, his term has expired in July. So, and he has agreed to serve again. So would there be a recommendation to allow him to serve one more term? In a four-year term?
I don't like that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
No, second.
Agreed. Hall and Fair, say aye. Uh, number five would be appoint Beth Green to Recreation Board for a four-year term. I think that either Val was on this board and, uh, her term expired. And she asked that we look if I, you know, were placement. And Beth Green has been suggested. And, uh, I think she'd do a great job. So is there a motion to appoint Beth Green to a four-year term on the red board?
I don't like that motion.
Who did that, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay.
On second.
Okay, Frances. Hall and Fair, say aye. Okay. This time we have some reports. Um, what I'd like to do here just a little bit is go into a work session, uh, with the layers, with the council and our, uh, we've got Reed Kepner here and our accountant, Alan Cantrell. Kind of go over some, the bond issue that we're talking about. If we're borrowing new money and the reason we would be borrowing new money. Uh, when we refinance, uh, the bond is coming up. And we've been in discussions with Reed for several months. And almost to the point to where we just need to know the amount of money we want to borrow for any new projects. We know we have a downtown project to be paid. We know that we have suggestions and recommendations, uh, for Larry Armstrong to direct from Tim Riley with the fire department and from Rodney with the water for various projects. If we borrow any money at this time, because the interest rate gives us an opportunity to do this. And we've had many discussions. And we also had long discussions with Alan Cantrell. And over the weekend, I kind of came up with a report to a post of council, but nothing written in stone. It doesn't have to be done this way, can be done, uh, all of it or none of it. It's just what we want to do as a group. But I have a suggestion of coming up about eight million dollars in new money. And what this would be, would be, uh, one and a half million dollars to pay off a loan at First National Bank, uh, which we know we need to pay for, we're on the revitalization. A second item would be approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Chief Tim Rice presented to us for review. And this would include two tanker trucks and allows a better fire station on the east side of town. Uh, the third item would be approximately nine hundred thousand. And like I said, any of these can be up or down. Uh, approximately nine hundred thousand for water sewer improvements with maybe a hundred thousand for, just in case we had a hundred thousand out of nine hundred. Just in case we had unexpected expenditures at one of the water plant or sewer plants. The fourth item I have on here would be, uh, allow approximately, like I said, any of these numbers can go up or down. Depending on how much money we're going to borrow. Two million dollars to build a multipurpose building big enough to, uh, I think would be plenty big enough for us to start. We know we need a multipurpose building. It's been proven that we have many things that would allow us to, to do this. And if we, if we could do that, it would be a start that would show the city of Hamilton that we're moving forward progress. And I think it's a great idea. Like I say, any of these numbers can be adjusted. Another, I also suggested that the city do build a water park. It's approximately about two million dollars. Now that can be up or down. This is just a suggestion. We know that it brings a lot of people to town and, uh, I think it's a good thing. Also having there approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for improvements at the rec center. We know that several things need to be upgraded to make it handicap accessible. Fields need to be upgraded, playgrounds, number of things, tennis courts. All these improvements are things that, um, we feel like would be worthwhile projects that'll move Hamilton forward. And it would show the folks that, uh, you know, anybody that's coming would see the things that's done, I think would be proud to have. Uh, there's also other money that I have in here that really wouldn't be expenditures for bond improvements. But, you know, it's just, these are just suggestions. And then, uh, what we need to do as a group is kind of figure out how much we want to borrow, if we want to borrow. And that's what I want to have a work session for. And, uh, we'll do that after our meeting. And so we can just talk, discuss things for a little while. And if we can come up with a figure, I'm going to let Alan and, or let Reed kind of talk to us and board the things that we may be doing. And we can do that here in a few minutes. But I'm going to move forward on agenda and we'll come back to this because this is going to take a while. But if you notice on our reports, we have other reports from council members. This is something we've added back to our agenda. And really, it's to get more involvement, more input from our council members. You may not have any kind of report tonight on any department that you're trying to represent or help. But as we get into this over the next few weeks and get adjusted to making changes, uh, Tim, if you have anything for police and water, you know, over the next, if you don't have anything tonight, that's fine. But in the future, if you have something you want to bring for us, we'll do that during the council meeting. And do you have anything that you'd like to talk about? I know this is kind of short, this is kind of something new we're trying, but it's really to get more input from our council. So you can, uh, if you have something, report to, to us, to the board.
Oh, I don't have, well, the police and water has anything. I don't have that.
Okay.
I hope to have one man back. Hold on.
Yes, can you give us an update on Eric Zill?
He's doing good, he's doing least physically, uh, has a good day to return to work. Um, there's some therapy issues that he's taking care of. And Birmingham, his next appointment is the twentieth of this month. So we hope to hear back, back with him from that. And hopefully, before the end of the month, we'll have him back training on the street.
Tim, I think this time I know, like I said, no.
It was short news. I did have a, I did bring the pace scale that I had mentioned to you before, but we can do that in the work session.
Okay. Frances, do you have?
Uh, I did speak with, uh, Mike this morning with the street department. And, uh, this is a busy time of year for them. And, uh, as everybody knows, and wherever you go, you see the street department. And we're all very appreciative to Mike and, uh, his crew. Uh, they're really hardworking. And, uh, my experience with them is that every time they start something, they finish it totally. And, uh, I've always been impressed with the street department. Uh, they're readying, uh, some streets, uh, patching and paving, he was telling me. And, uh, of course, they're doing a lot of bush hogging now. Uh, you can't keep up with it, can you? Uh, there's a lot of streets, uh, roads in, in Hamilton. And they've been working up the baseball, uh, high school footballs, uh, working there. And, uh, I think you said that you were paving or had patched around fourteen streets and with more, uh, to be worked on. So it's good. Uh, I think Kurt Heath, they've ridden around with me. They'd looked at doing some asphalt. Am I using the right terminology? Very, very expensive, isn't it? But hopefully, we can get started on some of that. Can't complete it, but hopefully, we can get started. But hats off, kudos to Mike and his group at the street department. Go well beyond the call of duty. Never have I called them and did them with Kevin. As for anything, and I don't think anybody in this town has if they have, is a lack of communication and not gotten the best quality of service. And as with all of our employees. Talked with Brenda Oswald over at the senior center this morning. She and one feller are staying really, really busy, um, really proud. They call, applauds, uh, those girls over there and, and the work that has come from getting the right people in that are fit for it and that are interested in it. In-house, they, and some of you out there go to this, um, in-house, uh, they feed thirty, about thirty every day. And, uh, I've eaten with them several times, plan to again. You can't beat it for a dollar, I'm telling you, if you're a senior citizen. It's a well-balanced meal. In homebound, thirty-five. Uh, so that's, uh, what, sixty-five right there. Plus, once a week, they deliver eleven frozen meals. So this is a really big program that touches a lot of people that otherwise would not get, uh, the quality of food. And it's not just about the families, it's about the fellowship and getting out and, and being interactive with people once you retire and if you're not, don't have a part-time job or work at church or hobbies or volunteering for something. I would encourage everybody to volunteer for something. We need you, meet areas in the city. Uh, it, it's a good opportunity for people to get out. This spring, they had the senior appreciation day. Most of us went over for that. It was a big success. And there's this Miss Fayette Harris that lives out in the country, comes twice a week. And, and she does some Bible studies with the people. And they're writing some stories and, uh, got some art going on, I understand. And that's great. And here, uh, back in July, they went on an outing to Spring Creek, uh, Spring Park up in the Shrews area.
Jerry Brown's too, I think.
You went out to Jerry Brown's? Excuse me, yes, she didn't meet you in that, but, but I went out there, talked with them. And, uh, they, uh, Erica Adams down at the assisted living facility invited them to come down there and serve them refreshments. So it's a new assisted living facility, so that was good. And then a Sarah Care comes, uh, the first and third Friday and they all play bingo. So, and I understand Mr. Lewis or Ms. Lewis, do they not, or James, do they not give out prizes for their bingo games most of the time? That's great. But anyway, again, they're doing a great job. Boy, I'm concerned everybody is working real hard. So we appreciate that. That's, so we want to add.
Thank you. Greg, if you, like I said, this is the first to kind of get back into this routine. I think when we first got to Lake, and I'd asked him, he might have anything to say. We kind of got away from that. But, uh, we'll get back into that as we get used to this type of agenda. Fred, do you have any, anything to bring to us tonight?
I don't have anything to bring to you. I just want to say I appreciate the child, the fire, the police and the rec centers do, along with the rest of the departments also.
Absolutely. Ben?
I don't have anything.
Tim, Larry, Sugar, y'all got anything y'all would like to get up?
Just, uh, I'm just waiting on to hear back from ISO. I thought maybe we would have heard from them by now, but.
As we get back into our work session here a minute, uh, or however we handle this next part, talking about these, the improvements that were made and the issue, the bond issue and how much to spend here and there. Uh, I've got the department head here for that. They've got to tell us and go over. I got a copy of what we've paid out, due to review. So, uh, Scott, what do you, you also going to Germany and come back? Take a few minutes and come back in your work session? Or how do you handle this?
Make a motion to go to work session. Did I have to come back for Germany or?
Okay. My, sorry, there's one thing. Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanted to bring up just a few minutes because we've been working all summer long since school got out. Bring us to the attention, to the media and the council members and everything. The children, going back to school this Friday, school starts. We've made some adjustments to this intersection on Seventeen Highway over here at National Guard, Smoky Bear Road. We, we're going to have this intersection tightened up quite a bit. The stop bars are going to be moved in. There's going to be some additional merging lane put in over there and some re-striping done over there to get this tightened up and hopefully cut down on the number of accidents and congestion that we have early in the morning and the afternoons. So if, you know, if you've got kids over here and suggest that you make a trip between now and Friday so that the reconfiguration of the intersection and everything doesn't catch you by surprise come Friday morning when you're rushing through trying to get the kids to school or Friday afternoon when you're trying to pick them up. So just that, you know, as a safety manager, we've been with the state, the county, the city, everybody trying to get it reconfigured. Alabama powers remove poles, um, rewire the wiring structure. The home companies can't be redone. So we hope it's going to be an improvement and a lot safer intersection this year. So, you know, get out and check it out, drive by, look at it. Just make sure that it don't catch you by surprise.
It already looks better.
It does. They've finished, in process of finishing one side. I think they're going to be striping on the National Guard side, Fire Department side tomorrow. Reconfiguring some merging lanes, dumb lanes to the sides. Going to move the seventeen stop bars closer together so that the motor vehicle operators can see one another with more closer contact instead of it being so loose and drawn out as it has been.
I think it'd be much safer. And I appreciate the police department and the state of Alabama. When they got involved in this project, they designed it and because of some state highway, and I really think it's going to help moving those stop bars up closer, merging lanes. And the double gal line that's going between the Fire Department and the National Guard will be moved toward the National Guard side to tighten that line up and get more of a cross the street of Smoky Bear. So that's what the chief is talking about. It'll, it'll really, really help congestion right there. It'll just, in the morning, it's very, especially when school's going on. And I think this is a good idea. And I appreciate the state for hammering that. Uh, I'd like to have a work session in my office, but if there's several, if it wants to stay, we'll just do it in here. Uh, but we have a motion to go into a work session. So we can just kind of talk, we can come forward now and arm our heads. This time we're just going to work session. We, if we make a decision on how much to borrow tonight, we'll go back in a work session. So is there a motion just to go into a work session?
I don't like a motion.
Is there a second? Okay, Tim, thank you. Hall and Fair, say aye. Let's take about five minutes, stretch your legs just a second. Do you have anything? We'll move it in the office unless there's a lot of folks who want to stay. But if not, I'm rooting that it would be, we'll have to stay. This is easier around the table. Well, we just started. Basically, I just want to have a work session with the council. Uh, we've been thinking about doing some more projects. We know we have to pay a million and a half for downtown. At this time, if we borrow any new money, this would be the time to make improvements in our Fire Department, the Street Department, the red. If we borrow any new money. And we know we're going to refinance, read the two thousand and six bond. It's what, three million, about three million dollars?
bond, that's what, three million, about three million dollars, and save approximately two hundred thousand dollars in interest. So, now it's time to refinance. And the reason we may borrow new money is to do some new projects, especially paying the million and a half we owe First National. And if we were to do any other projects, now would be the time to do. So, I'm telling you, three million dollars on the two thousand and six bond, refinance and three million that we already have, we're just refinancing and saving interest.
How much interest, sir?
Approximately two hundred thousand, is that correct, Reed?
That's right. That was the numbers we had at the time, every time the municipal budget happened, that's right.
So, then we were saying.
Three million, two hundred forty-five thousand dollars in debt, that's what you're refinancing.
So, with lower interest rates, if we were to do any new projects, which we know y'all have, but we don't know what's interest rate, but.
Right now, your interest rate is almost at four percent. It's about three point nine. And you'd be somewhere down around two point eight today. So, you're chopping off over a hundred basis points off your interest rate. They're not supposed to give you that. Good savings.
Two point eight. So, with that in mind, we thought, well, now would be the time, if we did any more projects, this would be the time to go ahead and do. We know with the, with the ISO rating coming in, improvements that we know we need to make in the Fire Department. Tim, I've got Tim here. And since I got you on here first, Tim, I'll let you talk about that. Tim gave us a proposal several weeks ago. And in that proposal included two tanker trucks, the reason for those to be able to deal water tank shuttle with those two trucks, and a proposal for possibly a new fire station east of town, which we know that's part of their recommendations. And Tim, I'll let you give your reasons behind that. These are just approximate figures, except partly the trucks. Those are.
Sure. The trucks are pretty close. Yeah, they're pretty close. Like I was telling you up there in the hall, between E one and Pierce, they were like, just a general, giving them my idea of what we might want, they were within five thousand dollars with each other. On that. And that would be so we could have a water shuttle. The word of people is that without, that's not within a thousand foot of a fire hydrant, but within five miles of a fire station, we'd get the lower class insurance rate on that. And we still have to go through ISO and demonstrate that we can do it. It's not going to be, as soon as we get two trucks, we're automatically doing this. It's going to take just a little bit of transitioning to that.
And Tim, that was approximately nine hundred fifty thousand?
That's correct.
Could be a little more, could be a little less. A building I had, I think you had, how much?
Three hundred fifty thousand.
We don't, we don't know that.
No.
We don't know it for sure. It could be a little less.
It could be less.
All we need is to be, to be a unit, a little station, really. Do you know exactly how far we'd come this way?
About the industrial park would be, as far as we want to come. I've got some, I've got some road miles from the industrial park, turning in right into industrial park. We turn in, go all the way to the back. It's like eight tenths of a mile. That's anywhere in that industrial park. From the industrial park, County Road, Kiki One, it's one point three miles. Forty-nine, it's two and a half miles. So, if you built in the very back, and it was two and a half miles, that's three miles beat up. Then you go off of two seventy-eight, you'd have about two miles to go each way.
If I get from Marion County Water Office says to the right of there, it would be, looks like, no. I mean, do we, is that land available from there?
I don't know.
Or does anybody know who owns that land that would be east of that building?
I don't know.
East of the building, in the park still, or on the other side of the park?
In the park. Just on the east side of Marion County Water Development Building.
Department of Transportation, is it?
Department of Transportation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Our next available lots further on down towards south end, I guess we would.
Yeah, right there, past Perfect Pound, there on the left.
And that's going to take in all the way out to Shenandoah Road?
Mm-hmm. From, it's three miles to Shenandoah Road from the industrial park. Where you turn into industrial park.
So, that would start. Okay, and we go, well, it's going to take in all the yellow?
Mm-hmm.
All the yellow going east?
The old highway department shop would be too far this way.
It may not be.
Well, we're just talking about the industrial park. If I say we're in the city, that's not going. Not buying any more land.
We'll probably get that, don't we?
Are you talking about where is the, is the?
Old highway department.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's down below if they got a shop, doesn't it?
Oh, I see. Now, what would go in this building? Oh, Tim had mentioned two days.
Would put it with.
Be a bad night.
One of those, yeah, one of those trucks. That would be the, I'd have it for a training place.
Would training be a part of ISO? Do you get any points for having a training?
Yeah, you've got to have so many hours per man trying to train.
What kind of train over here?
Well, we can. It's just, we ain't got no room over there.
Have you looked at the size of the building?
No, I mean, not really. I mean, we just.
Well, you sit here seventy-five to seventy-five.
Yeah, that's just a.
Just a destination.
I think it's one in Haverhill.
One in Haverhill. I've got, I've got their plans.
Yeah, it was about four.
Yeah, but see, we wouldn't need all that base space. They got four or five drive-through bays in there.
They got three bays that drive all the way through.
Three, and then one in.
And there's a, then one bay is offices and a safe room. It's pretty nice.
Yeah, it's real nice.
And how much do you have with the building? What'd you say about those way? And which would be, approximately?
Pretty deep, okay.
And Tim, the two tanker trucks. The reason we need two is for, to be able to do the water shuttle.
Mm-hmm. We, we're required to have three. And we've got to have eighty-three one ice pump heads and more. So, we got some points for it, but you can get all the points for it. And we're required to have three.
Now, Wade, we're required to have three. We're going to buy two. And the one we have, we didn't get all the points, though?
That's correct. We've got two. We've got three over there now. One of them we keep out at Weston. We'll need to put one there, and one east of town.
That gives cover as far as tanker truck.
That's correct.
Now, we don't know what our ISO, they finished up in July. That was here the first.
The first July.
And we could get a report any day. Could be a few more weeks, or it could be this week. And with that report, we're hoping that we're going to stay a four slash, what?
Nine.
If it comes back, that it's maybe just barely a five, they will give us time to.
Implement a plan.
Implement a plan to get it back down, which may include some of these things to get our rate back.
That's correct.
You know, especially getting a station east of town, we could serve more residents.
That, is that, is that out there? Is that right now?
You're either, there might be a ten.
Yeah, maybe a tens. If they're not within five miles of the fire station, they're a ten.
But even if they're within five miles and don't have water, they're still.
They're a nine.
They're a nine, yeah. And some of that's up there at Weston also.
Yeah, and.
So, how's that work if the tanker's out there? Why are they still a nine?
Because we don't have a water shuttle. We can't.
So, we just, okay.
So, buying the two tanker trucks will give us that opportunity to a water shuttle, which may.
Which would make up our.
Still got to get the amount of water. But instead of having to put hydrants all over town, the six inch lines would be several million dollars. This would be a solution. It might not get everybody, but it will get a lot more people than it does right now.
That's correct.
Well, the shuttle will help people on the other side of town.
Yeah, everywhere.
It'll help everyone, even out Weston.
You can use the two tankers if you're able to get so much water, too much gallons per minute. You've got to have a hydrant close to get that and get back to the fire. So, you know.
So, both tankers would have to respond. So, while one of them is, so.
Both of them would have to gain a solid, that's what they're doing is they, they're just hauling water constantly and dropping it.
So, it isn't going to make a difference if the fire is east of town, the first tanker will go to east and be there quick, and the second tanker will follow in and then they'll back in, okay?
That's correct.
So, they both don't have to be there at the same time, just as long as the second one gets there before it enters?
So, that's the reason for Justin, too. And that's the reason for Justin putting in a bond issued with new money, because that's not the way you're going to do it right now. I'm going to let Reed tell us in a minute when the supervisors get through with their recommendations. How borrowing this money, keeping our payments properly the same for several years, is the reason we're able to borrow any money. You know, if we're adding to our debt, which we are, if those were coming off, the extra payments each year would be almost, it would put us in a strain. But if we're borrowing new money and leaving our payments the same, we're stretching our debt limit, even though we are going more into debt. It's not putting us in a financial strain. I think Alan and Reed can attest to that, because that's why we're having this meeting. And I can finally get to discuss, if we do these projects, and if we borrow more money, this is the reason. And with Adam's advice, I've come up with that amount of money. We could go on more or less, but we'll get into that in a minute.
Wade, does this still include the vehicle for the fire rescue?
Does not include a four drive twenty-five thousand. If we do that, we can, we can get that out of regular, you know, out of our, out of our regular budget we do for the.
And the fifty thousand dollars for the extra equipment?
That, that might be.
It's good.
And not the truck.
One of the trucks.
We'll have to quit one of them. We've got enough to quit one.
That's right.
We wouldn't have to quit one, one truck. So, yeah, that could be, but not the pickup. Because that's, that's something we can get out of a regular budget. It's not going to be any other fault. Anything else for Tim? We'll move forward. Like I say, these numbers are, are not hard exact numbers, but Reed will explain. We don't have to know the exact amount of every single thing. We need to know what we're comfortable borrowing. So, when he goes to the bond market, we can get that started. Once we've decided how much we want to borrow, and then we can come back and say, you know, get estimates for a station and as long as we're comfortable with the amount. So, that's why we're trying to get this nail down. Tim, anything else you have? Rodney?
Can you also give me some proposals in some areas that you feel like are very critical for water and some sewer and cleaning, the two tanks? This, this also is projects that are very worthwhile for bond issue. It's a good project, and it's something that helps a lot of people. So, if you would kind of go over the reason for these areas that you feel like is maybe more critical than some of the others?
Mayor asked me about getting some projects that, that are long-term projects, you know, like twenty-year projects. I did have a, I've got a lot larger list of items, it's not twenty years, you know, in the works, but we came up with this, these three, actually four items. We do have some old on Fort Avenue Northwest, some old water lines that's still in the ground that needs to be replaced. And of course, that within, it is six inch lines. And that would mean replacing the fire hydrants and everything that's on this line. This, this runs from what we call the duck pond over there, all the way back to where you turn to go up right beside Good, where Goodson's feeding them water, that street that goes all the way up through there. That's where the, the old water line is. And then, of course, the sewer is around Spring Street, sewer replacement. That, that's a sewer line that's up in the old park that needs some attention to it. It's, again, old line that's in the ground that just needs to be replaced. Then on the water tanks, aqua tanks, two hundred fifty thousand gallon tank, also the Mitchell Hill tank, two hundred thousand gallon tank. I, I met with a tank crew today. We actually went up and did an inspection on these two tanks. They're going to put together a proposal and probably present it to the, to the council, probably in a few weeks. Both of these tanks do need some attention. They need to be cleaned out inside and out, washed out, and painted inside and out.
How long has it been since they've been done? Or have they?
Mitchell Hill tank was done, I hadn't pinpointed the date yet, but I know it has been done in the past.
It's a long time.
Been a long time.
Overdue time.
And the aqua tank, I, again, I can't, can't pinpoint the date when it was done. But that never has been done. Probably not.
I can remember the Mitchell Hill, too, where that's been, had it been here as well.
And I did go through what we call a sanitary survey with eight of them back in the spring. And these tanks were mentioned in our report that, that they do need some attention.
So, where do these estimates come from? If you've already talked to them, and they're going to be coming up with their own estimates?
Well, these, these, these are preliminary cost estimates. A three actually did these for me. And this is, we listed on all these projects about the highest rate you would go. Of course, when you take bids on projects, you never know what the bids are going to come in, higher, lower, you know, depending on the price of pipe and Florida water projects. You never know what bids are going to come in at. All you can do is kind of predict what they would come in at. And I feel like most of these are kind of on the upper end of the pricing. I think we can get maybe the two tanks done cheaper than what, what we've got on here. Again, that's, that's why you bid stuff out.
Well, there's no need taking a bid until you know you're going to do the projects. You get a preliminary cost, which will probably be close to what this is. And if this bond issue is approved, the money gets approached aside to do these projects, and then we can get more specific costs. But I imagine they're going to run fairly close to what we got estimate.
So, the pumps and the motors and the clear wells or the freshwater, they're not significant enough to go on a borrowing?
No, I, I thought about that and talked with the mayor about it. That's why we have put so much money in repairs and maintenance in my budget for pumps to go down, or, you know, to replace pumps, or whatever needs repaired.
How much should the one we're replacing cost?
Which pump you talking about?
The one that was in the clear wheel that's laying outside now?
It was about, I want to say around twenty thousand dollars.
So, the other two, did they replace also?
Yeah, the mid-level.
Because they were there. They're all pretty, they're, they're original. So, we have one even and two originals that have been there twenty plus years.
Whenever the plant, well, it's just ninety-five plant from the wall. Whenever the plant, well, it's just ninety-five.
And he has a cost estimate of close to eight hundred thousand. My suggestion was if we allow maybe eight fifty or nine hundred to have money, just in case that happens. Now Reed, that might not be something you expect in future expenditures on something, to have that money set aside. If you can't do that, then we're just not, you know, having any contingency money, you know, for the bond issue. I'll let you talk about that, if that's a worthwhile project.
That read goes to my question. If you say one thing in this whole bond issue ran under cost, then you could use the excess for another project. It's not just defined.
That's right.
It can flow.
That's exactly right. I think Reed can explain that too. You don't have to have exact cost of every single thing you want to do for the bond. What they need to know is the amount of money that we want to borrow. We go from that, work within that budget that we have. The bonds guys don't care what we spend on. And they, they, they know that, that it's up to us to spend wisely. So that's why I add a little extra we could set aside for projects. Because we know twenty-year-old water plant is gonna have some expenditures against, like a twenty thousand dollar pump. If those things goes out, we don't always have twenty thousand dollars set aside to repair that pump at that time. So that's why I wouldn't care if we did borrow some and have just a little extra and maybe an account or something, just in case. It wouldn't put us in a financial strain. Anything else, Rodney? Do you have anything to question? You know, we spoke the other day, a lot of these things, we went over with the rec board, these expenditures the other day. The bid was in there, the money was in there, the deal was there. My suggestions for future expenditures and things, if we did bond money, I suggest maybe having, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars go toward the rec in previous, which would include a number of things and you can kind of go over some of those. The guy that come and looked at the tennis courts today, come to see me.
Duffy Bowles came by and danced.
They're in terrible shape.
He said tennis courts are have to be, what he's called is reconstructed. You can't just take the surface up and put a surface back down. The concrete would have to be reconstructed underneath then the circus put back down. So that's gonna be conserving more cost. We're still dealing with a light factor down there. We have several people using that. And we need to, and we'd have a great, great thing anymore if we, if we had this right here. Handicap parking is a must. If we're gonna solicit government funds for anything, we must get handicap approved. That's, that's gotta be a major project. Kurt's working with us and kind of give us some pictures on things and draws on what we have to house. So we go ahead and kind of find us an exact cost or a, a good, before we bid some of this, a good estimate cost on what this is gonna take. So we, it's really important we do the handicapped stuff. We've got softball field over on these lights. We've got, we've got a field we could use for table. I need a concession stand and bathroom between the two, the, the service, the old Charles Trimble field and, and that field between, and with bathrooms and concession with handicap parking. All this stuff we do and anytime we add or do, we must make the handicap accessible. I haven't got my list without, there's several things on there that's...
Part of it.
Top lot, our top lot's not handicap accessible, must be. We've got to put a surface down, you know. It's like, that ain't nothing to put a surface down, but you put something down they can fall on without being injured battery. And, and push a wheelchair on, it's a real fine liner. They, they park, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars to put a surface down. At base, maybe more than that. Most of it revolves around handicapped facilities. We, we're good at the Dixie use fields. We're gonna do the pavilion, we're gonna do the ball fields up, Charles Trimble field and old softball field. We're gonna do the tennis courts. They must be handicapped accessible. We're gonna be the, the pavilion is a, this, everything is good. There aren't any parking, I believe. Do that as a project, do that as, maybe our last project, first project should be over at the, at the complex, at the elementary school. Gotta have a handicap bathroom up at the baseball field. Our bathrooms at the complex are handicapped accessible already, yet we've got to have parking for those, you know, driveway or a concrete area getting to those folks. So we've worked it out. I think Kirk's made some good suggestions and it's really gonna be better lesson than what I thought. Lynn's made a suggestion about putting that stuff on the outside and this and it's gonna be real, it's gonna be a lot to limp it. But when we start limping that right there, we've got to take a look at the, the extra cost that's gonna take our construction. Reconstructing it. If we're gonna do it, then there, there need to be done where they...
Did he give you cost?
No, he said get that one. Duffy Bowles is the guy that can't, he's...
How have we got by without, no, excuse me, how have we got by so far without not being penalized?
Most of that stuff, Francis, when it come, they just, they just kind of isolated one day and it's all right.
I see.
So we're talking about this right now. Now, we tried to fly a couple of times with soil and constipation in Montgomery and the lady took over from Mr. Strickland. Called me up and says, actually, where's front door? She knew of what's my call back. And she said, well, no need, no need you being here because until you get all your stuff handicapped accessible, we're not gonna recommend funding anything here.
Did you talk to anybody about the roof?
No, our, our roof leaks and then these, but you know, it's like a flat roof. If I put a gap, if I put a gap on this thing, it's gonna have to be like, have to be lit. Something like the courthouse and put the rubber swimming pool up there.
That's what I was saying about the roof, just to carry a...
We can't, our floor is gym floor and Mr. Waller is damaged again and we can't definitely buy it until we get the roof fixed.
Well, that needs to be in here. I mean, would that not call by roof?
Or a lot of the complexes.
It does parking lot, we're talking about around a hundred thousand dollars there. How close?
Where the house is?
Hundred and twenty-five, thirty, didn't you say?
Parking lot?
Yeah.
How much remain of the top lot?
Uh, we'll relocate the parking, the top lot and that's when, the relocating problem, it won't be a real big issue. It's just getting the, the surface down so that we'll be, be able to put it down as we began.
Like your fence?
Yes, ma'am. That'd be secured over there, just like.
My question was going back to the, the, would you still take some of the handicaps, as was discussed the other night? Some of the handicap things would be done with the regular drill fund budget and then the roll over?
There's sixty thousand left in there right now.
Yeah, it would not be all the handicapped stuff in the bond.
Right, right. All this would not be, the bigger items would probably be needed if we do a bond issue and try to include those major expenses. But the ten thousand here and there, we've had in our budget for a couple of years, we just haven't really...
We're talking about, excuse me.
You're not done, but go ahead.
We're talking about doing something like with the roof, you know, we're talking about two hundred five thousand. Well, that, that's maybe, I'd serve to this.
Water treatment plant, wasn't it? Thirty-seven, sixty-seven, you know, when we first got in here?
Sixty-seven thousand.
Well, now I'm looking in here with the mayor and he's saying, just having trouble with some playing on the fields over there. What, what was that?
Where we don't have enough fields.
You're setting up some place, something in the...
Soccer fields.
We're playing, play soccer. They, they want to play softball at the same time. The priority on the thing was what we said.
So we don't have enough fields, I think. Is that not the land?
The law would say that we got plenty, what some of them told me. So, I mean, I can understand if you're setting them up, why can't they play?
I don't understand your question yet.
What was it, Wade? You, they was setting up and somebody said couldn't lay on that field or something?
I think some, some fields that, you know, certain page groups play on use that field a lot. And maybe they, maybe take ownership of that field.
It's a city field.
Correct.
Everything, everything we talked about.
Thing about it is those groups also put a lot of money in those fields.
I understand that.
Even some of it's even paid for irrigation and things like that, out of money that they raised. So I guess they, it's a hand-in-hand thing that we need to work together on because, you know, it is a city field. The schools actually done on...
I think the last problem right now, Tim, with that, it has been a passion. We're working toward, for common ground, I think. I think we could solve it with lighting that one field or something. Be a soft, be a soft thing right there. I think we're still gonna deal with some soccer, but we'll put something, issue that is a go.
Well, I mean, the mayor looks to me like if they, you know, people, Larry's in charge.
That's right. The light in the upper softball field that's not being used that much has a new fence.
It's ready to play on, send, send blue shirts and stuff.
Exactly. Which, you know, that's where we played years ago, all the time on the upper field.
I understand, I understand a lot of people play at soccer.
A lot of people play soccer. Maybe another program too we need to put in, but it's right now we don't, we have it. Body ball is up and going playing with the girls. We need, we need, we need to make room for that. So far we have it, we're, we got that in the plans, okay?
Yeah, that's really good. It would be nice to have a designated soccer field. That's all we use it for. You don't have to worry about team ball or baseball or anything.
Soccer's a twelve-month year.
Having the property and a place to do it, you know, is a thing.
Well, there's hundreds of thousands of things that if we had, if we was endless and un-limbed with our money and stuff here, we could do. But what we need to do is make up our mind, which is the most important thing for the, the bigger group of the cities right now. I think y'all got that in mind, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, you could spend two hundred thousand and just kind of meet.
Oh, yeah, easily.
But you gotta have a worthwhile project and we know we're limited. We can't do everything we want to do, but we, we need to make a real big head start.
We need to put the roof on this thing for sure.
Absolutely, that's right.
You'll need to get...
What are you gonna do if you don't put a roof on it?
We could just, yeah.
It'll leak.
Well, it can leak, we stop the hood.
I'm, that's where I'm saying, you have to. I don't see, you got a choice.
Anything else, Tim?
Does it leak or the gym and the building join us together?
It leaks at the, when, when there's a gym and all that stuff come together. We saw some of the leaks, but we had one guy in there doing some, at our house, we call it diving.
Yeah.
We dived some places and it did a real good job. I'm talking about an amazing good job. And, and we dived some more last time it rained, not last week, and it, it didn't, it didn't leak the last time. So it, it is, it's kind of ongoing.
It's not making it to free throw line anymore.
No, for which time it, it was going through the old arcade system, we took it on. It's an ongoing thing with the flat roof. You know, you think, boy, I've got this on a control and next time it comes a northeast rain, look at here, you know, blow it, you just don't know.
Well, with all this right here, that's on this list, would that get everything handicapped?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, that's good, okay.
Any more questions? I'll get out of your way. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Mike's only supervisor guy laughing. He really don't have anything in the bond issue. But Mike, if you got anything, if we did, if you have a major expense that you could tell us right now to get in a budget or that might not be included in the bond because...
Well, I, I do, Wade. An expense is actually to me maybe that this wouldn't be something that we could do with the bond money. But a few weeks back, he three and I...
That's right.
Did a tour through, through several neighborhoods that I thought would impact the most number of people. So what I did was, we went through several neighborhoods and I took just a few minutes and drew off on the city map here of some of the areas that we went to. Up here on Highway seventeen, Rogers, Roddy Street up in there, Thompson Southern Vision out in Westons. Yeah. And down Second Street, out, for Alan's house, out that way. And the lower part of Academy Drive, I think the last time we did some paving, the upper part of Academy Drive was done, but not the lower part. So we'd get it all the way through and then out on Brookview Drive. That's the neighborhood that's, in the last few years, several homes have sprung up out there. There's a new one going in there now, possibly another one or two. But anyway, that's, pass that around, that's, that's the neighborhoods that, that I felt would impact the most number of people and help us out. Improve their quality of life out in their neighborhood. Oak Hill subdivision was included in that too. Regency Street, I believe, has already been resurfaced. Steel Street's been resurfaced. This would connect all that together. There's a list of all the streets, the mileage on each one. It's possibly six miles of resurfacing.
Yeah, what type of resurfacing we talking about?
It'd be asphalt.
Asphalt, yeah, yeah.
Did we not talk about...
You know what kind of rain?
He didn't, he didn't, he just gave it...
Generally for a resurface, two hundred, two fifty, hundred, three hundred.
Did we not talk about this earlier, that asphalt in the bond?
Yeah, he's not asking.
Okay, okay.
I'm not, I just...
He's just saying if we have a project, if, you know, we have money available for him, but not in the bond. But they did say resurfacing streets probably would be a good project. Did y'all say that?
No, I mean, you can. What you want to do is if you resurface, you just don't want to amortize the debt on that.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, but you can amortize the debt five years or ten years on that piece. So let's say you had a million dollars of resurfacing, you could put that in and say, we want to pay that off in, you know, five years.
Okay. Mike, what about that, out from the old western where they're putting the, the shoulders? Did we do anything with those streets or are they our streets or are they in somehow with the federal housing authority?
I'm not familiar with that.
With the, out of the old western?
The housing.
The housing.
We don't, yeah, we don't leave anything besides those.
Somebody next to her, they've got potholes out there if they lose a car in. So that's all up to the housing authority?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying.
Another project I think would be good would be to have a multi-purpose building. If we're going to, in the lesson, the muscle where, because we know it's several million dollars to repair that building and then put a roof on it. My suggestion would be if we borrow new money, let's borrow enough to do a multi-purpose building. I've got an estimate of two million dollars and I can do one for more or less. It's just something that, we need something at least thirty thousand square foot, if not more, to have, you know, it be a humongous asset for our student to have this. Because it could be used year-round, not just something once a year.
Did you have to work up on that at one time? Do we not have that?
Two million dollar building.
Didn't we have that at one time? I thought he had brought it.
We had a, we had an estimate for a two point two five million dollar building. That was roughly.
Did I not see the drawing one time?
There was a rough sketch, you wouldn't have.
Okay.
I had got a sketch. Roughly thousand.
How long, when we borrow this money, can we hold it without using it?
The IRS generally likes to see you spend it within three years. They're, you know, what, and what they, what their motive is, is they don't want cities and counties borrowing money at a low tax exempt rate and turning around and investing it at a higher rate. Of course, we all know today, you can't do that because your investment rates don't pay you anything. But in a normal interest rate environment, you would be able to borrow at one rate and invest at a higher rate. And so the IRS doesn't want you doing that. So they limit it to three years. If you go beyond three years, it's not the end of the world. You know, projects change all the time. I've had clients that have taken eight and ten years to spend the bond money. But just... But just, you know, if the issue ever got audited, you just wanna have a good explanation. Hey, we thought the project was gonna be this amount, and we had to put the bids out, it came in a lot less. We, in fact, we had that happen a good bit after the credit markets collapsed, and construction prices fell dramatically. And so you would have cities and counties go out and think that they were going to spend ten million dollars, and the bids came back at seven, you know. You're not seeing as much of that anymore, but several years back, you had that happen. So generally, you need to try to spend it within three years, but if it runs a little beyond that, you'll be okay.
The size that you mentioned, would that A, be something like a thousand seat or more? Or, and B, would it be enough space for the exhibitors paying for Jerry Brown in terms of forty, fifty exhibitors?
Yes, the both, it would be paying up.
So we have a picture of it. I mean, we've got this, we know what goes with this two million dollars.
Well, no, it's just an estimate.
Okay.
It's, we know.
You don't have to know right now.
We'd have to work within that to have, you know.
Learn that much, but you have to stay within that.
Right, you'd have to stay within that budget, but that would, go ahead. I just, I've done some work on just a preliminary rough sketch of a building, if you'd be interested in taking a look at it. Okay, yeah.
Prefab.
Yeah, it's a prefab building. I did just a rough sketch up. I don't really think it's where we wanna be, but, um, the building's a hard quote, but this would be, this main area's about twenty-five thousand square feet, which is approximately about five thousand more square feet than we had for Jerry Brown Arts Festival this year over at the Kobe building. And then I was looking at, and this is just kind of a bare bones, gets you kind of started on what you would like. And then this is three thousand square feet of, um, just office space, where you could have concessions and a conference room and of course bathroom facilities. And then I kind of thought, you know, if you've seen some of these hotel ballrooms where they put removable partitions in there, if you might be able to put some type of partition in there, and each one of these spaces would be about five thousand square feet. And that will allow you to have up to, say, three different activities going on. Let's say you have, you know, if somebody wanted a reception or a reunion or something, you could have a facility there that'd be able to do that. And probably in the neighborhood of a million dollars on this to start, I would go to thirty thousand or more, but that's. And those are all my estimates on it.
And it's kind of there that, you know, anybody can change or change.
Well, I estimate a little more, I know you get a building for the last, you know, round of millions. Doesn't have to be two million.
No, but I'm just saying, it's a start, and it's something.
Right, that's all that is.
What are you gonna have? You gonna have, where you can have different type flooring in there, or where you can have dirt in there, or what are you, what are you thinking about?
Now, that one, I was gonna have concrete. I was gonna just have concrete.
I had somebody telling me something the other day, that one place over in Mississippi, they could do it all at the little town. I forgot where it was at.
Verona, Mississippi.
Where?
Verona, Mississippi.
How, how do, how do they do?
They have rodeos and everything, you name it, you name it, they can furnish it.
Maybe you gonna have them.
If you think those numbers need to be changed, just let me know in the comments.
If you're gonna build something like that, it'll like you.
They have big flea markets, like they do up in Tennessee, up there at Firegrounds. They have big flea markets over there, they have rodeos over there, they have, uh, 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 live movie like stage movies over there that seat to anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five hundred people.
This is at Verona?
Yeah. They ain't got one building over there. The last time, the last time I seen them, they had four, and they was thinking about adding on more. And if y'all are interested.
Go look at it.
If y'all are interested in borrowing money to get a bond, and you, and you, you really wanna, really wanna be a, uh, be a success with it, I would suggest that you build a building that would seat at least thirty-five hundred people. Thirty-five to four thousand. Karen Wheaton has to carry her group.
I understand all that.
You got that?
Yep. My thing is, we gotta build something for Hamilton.
Well, it could be used.
It could be used, but we also gotta think about the cost of it.
Well, we could throw it years from now.
And this is, maybe this is a smaller version, but these metal builds could be added on years from now. I'm suggesting get started, and you have something that's adequate enough for us now, for a thousand people. And Jerry Brown and any other festival we might have, or gospel music singing or anything, be plenty big enough for a building like that. And, you know, it'd be something we can be proud of, and if, if this thing is so successful three, four, five years from now, we add on to it. But let's do something, and get started with a very nice building that is adequate for us at this time. And that, that's the main thing, is do something that's adequate for us at this time, that we can be proud of. And, you know, I think it'd be great to have it. It'd be nice to have a five million dollar building, but that's not, doesn't make economic sense to do that right now.
Is it too going to pay for itself?
No more than fire trucks and water lines and sewers and everything else, it won't pay for itself. I don't think it will. I think it'd bring a lot of people to Hamilton, but as far as actually paying for itself, I don't think it will.
Well, my, this, for the Jerry Brown Arts Festival, this would suffice.
But it won't.
We would be tickled to death to have third thousand square feet. Well, and, and have a permanent place. Well, I feel like that a facility like this can be occupied practically all throughout the year.
We know there's stuff, there could be times when there wasn't much going on, but you don't have to be heating and cooling that thing constantly.
Well, you could have smaller rooms up on.
The smaller rooms and the range that you could have a senior center, or you could have a tribute to Mustang Ware in one of those rooms, maybe the history of Hamilton or something in one of those rooms. There's multiple things we can do to that building that would justify us building it, and at least having something we can do. But no other city has it in Hamilton, in Marion County, so.
You still gotta remember though, one day, this bond issue is gonna have to be paid again. You can't guarantee that interest rate twenty years from now, so the next time it comes up, your payments might be triple.
But when it's paid off, we won't have it.
Well, you send your, had it paid off in that length of time, I won't be around.
He's an expert on that.
These are fixed rate bonds.
Interest rate's not gonna change.
That's why we're talking about borrowing new money, and he's gonna explain that in just a second, so we're gonna wait him to talk to him.
The Verona building down there, I think, as far as cooling, I think it's just got fans pulled out there, if they, they may have heaters for winter time, but as far as cooling, there's no cooling in it.
My main thing tonight, was try to come up with a, figure that we're comfortable with borrowing two million, five million, eight million, twelve million, whatever it is. We can borrow up to twelve or thirteen million, we know that. But I'm just not suggesting do that. I'm suggesting be conservative, be good stewards, and after talking with Alan and Reed and with Jan and going through our finances, that's why I felt comfortable with about eight million dollars, because I honestly felt like that's about the most we should borrow. By the time you add all this up, and if we were to do a water park, and I'm all for it, I really am, I think we need it. I made publicly statements that I did not think we should do a four or five million, and I still am. But I think we need something for our kids, I need, we need something for you. And I don't have a problem with a couple million dollars for a water park. We saw a proposal that, that, uh, Kirk showed us the other day, it was, it was very, very nice.
Good in here?
It's not, it was a new one, we met with the steering committee the other day, and it's, I got it folded right over there, but, um, Kirk, you wanna.
Could we see?
The, the one that we looked at the other day. It's about one point seven five.
Do you have a reading?
I don't have a.
You're working, you're reviving.
I already worked it out.
We've got one of, we've got one of the land that was ours fifty years ago. It's that old black, that old black sand land. I get mud in my water every night.
As opposed to this.
Up there, BBC is the street.
But it's not, there's not no BBC.
That was the, uh.
It's this old black roadhouse.
Five million dollar one that was.
And they put it, they put it in there before fifteen years.
The mayor, Chris went back to Kevin and also my aquatic folks, and this is one that we think we could build for about one point seven five or somewhere close to.
And the street up through.
It's not, it's not the way it claims, not all the fanciness, but it still has, it still has a kids layer, it's never retrieved, it's not painted, it's not. It's not, it's not the drawl that this is, but it's a very, very nice municipal pool.
Very nice municipal pool. You know, that was my thoughts about that amount of money, because you keep adding that and adding that.
Coming up with.
A lot of money.
We're responsible for the city.
This is a tree entry area, and I hear this is about the big tree, you can go down here, sure, that's what you did, that's what you did. Play areas. Okay, so definitely look at, some of these slides.
Yeah.
It's the difference, it's, it's, it's the difference in, this, this is more of a water park that's gonna draw from, you know, a larger, and this is a very nice municipal pool.
Well, you said one point eight, you said?
Somewhere between, we have one point seven five, two million.
Does that include facilities for bathrooms and all, I guess?
Yes, yeah, bathhouse, yeah. Uh, and we too, we're talking.
Parking everything.
And that's why I rounded the two. We know this, you know, the men comics made about this slide's too small. If you went up, made it to two million, you might get a lot bigger attraction or a bigger slide or something, but I was just, these are just numbers that I came up with basically to come up with a total amount. You know, that's, we can, if we can agree on a total amount, then we can work with each of these projects. And the total amount came from discussions with Alan and Scott and Jan going over our finances. That's why, you know, I felt like we didn't need to just keep borrowing more and more and more, to have something we could work with. And then each project, if we know how much we can borrow, we can work within that number. And Alan and Reed, I'll let you take over from here, and just kind of go over how it comes for that figure. And first of all, I just thank Reed for coming on short notice. I called him this morning and just said, can you come to our council meeting tonight? And he was on his way to Birmingham, so I don't have these stuff with me, but I can come. I said, it would be really important, because we're trying to nail down if we borrow this money. Kind of guide us, because you've been guiding us through the last few months, and I know you gotta go back to Montgomery and go along.
You know, when, when you guys hired us a few months ago, what we told you then is, we would go back and get all the paperwork put together, because we didn't want you waiting on us, and we wanted you to be able to catch the market at a good time when you were ready, instead of you telling us you're ready, and then we go off and have to do a bunch of paperwork. So we've spent a good bit of time working with the bond attorney, and Alan, and Scott, and Jan, and the mayor, and we've gotten the offering document for the bonds all put together. It's filled out, it's a lot of work to put one of those done together, but we've done that. We have made application to have the city's credit rating put on those bonds, that should happen on Friday. And so we're really now at the point where, uh, we're gonna be ready to go into the market, you know, when you're ready. And that's kind of what we said we'd do. We would bring it to the place where we're ready to go to market, and you're not gonna have to be waiting on us. So you're not having to wait on us anymore. So we're at the point where we just need to know, you know, how much money do you, do you wanna get? Uh, we've got the refinancing out there, we've got the new money that the mayor's gone through. I will tell you, the market has, you know, been a little bit of a roller coaster ride, but we, it's, it's down on a dip right now. Interest rates have dipped, um, so that, it's, it's a good time to be out in the market. There's good demand, uh, for Alabama bonds right now, so we're having a lot of success. We just sold Winston County, or just closed it last week, so I was up here last week closing an issue for them. And we've done, uh, you know, several other deals that have been in the market recently. It's a good time to be in the market. The money, again, just the only restriction on it is a couple. It needs to be for capital expenditures, okay? So you can't take the bond money and pay salaries with it. You can't take it and, uh, pay the power bill. You know, it's got to be, but as long as it's a capital expenditure, you're gonna be good. You can't, the only other restriction is it can't go just for the benefit of a private company. You can't go build a grocery store and tell publics, if they'll come in here, you'll lease it to them for twenty years. You know, if you do something like that that benefits a private company, uh, kind of like what you did on, I think, on the Kobe deal, you know, you gotta sell taxable bonds for that purpose. So as long as it's not benefiting just a private company, and as long as it's not going for salaries, then, and, you know, it's a capital expenditure, you're gonna be good if it's, uh, paving, if it's, uh, buildings, if it's land acquisition, if it's, um, you know, swimming pool, fire improvements, water sewer, all of that stuff is, is perfectly okay. And I was telling the mayor earlier, you know, our bond investors, what they look at is, number one, you know, is what they're gonna spend the money on, is it qualified for tax exempt purposes, all right? So if we get an opinion from the bond lawyer that says what you're doing is fine. And they wanna know, they wanna look at the financials and know that you can afford to make the payment, you can pay it back. Other than that, they don't really care if you spend five million on a water park, or two million on a water park, and two million on ball fields, and a million on something else. They, they just, that's not, um, part of their analysis. Their analysis is looking at the audits and looking at the city's financial condition. You're pledging your full faith and credit to pay the bonds back. You know, they're gonna be good with what you're spending the money on, so you don't have that to worry about. All you gotta do is stay away from paying salaries, which I know you're gonna do, and stay away from doing something that benefits one private company. And other than that, you're gonna be fine. So, um, you know, I mean, again, it's, I wanna thank Alan and Jan and Scott and the mayor. They've been very, very helpful as we pulled together a lot of this information, uh, to get the bond documents in good shape. And a lot of work's gone into that, and I appreciate all their help, it's been a good team effort.
And Reed, just to clarify this, you said our bond rating was four.
Well, you've got, you've got an A rating.
I mean, an A rating, A rating, and it's A plus, A plus plus, but our rating is, uh, A, and, uh, you said, and this would not hurt us in the future?
Well, what we, the way we structured this on your numbers, if you can see, your payment right now is about a million seven seventy. If you look at all the debt payments that the city has on an annual basis, and you add them all together, it's about one million seven hundred and seventy thousand. About a hundred and sixty thousand of that was for the Kobe project. Those bonds paid off in this fiscal year, okay? So that, so your payments automatically drop a hundred and sixty thousand dollars next fiscal year, because that bond issue paid off. So what we've done here is, we've kept your payments, and I think on the eight million dollar schedule, there's about a million six. So right now, you're paying a million seven seventy, that's gonna drop down to about a million six if you get to eight million. And so.
For how many years?
Um, the million, you know, it's a, it's, their, their debt payments, because they have different bonds maturing at different times, they just, it naturally falls, it naturally declines over the next several years. And so under this structure, what, what we've done is just, we've done the refinancing, then we've taken the new money on a twenty year amortization, but we've backloaded the principal and wrapped it around their other debt to keep their payments low on the front end. So it's about a million six until you get out to, um, twenty, twenty-three, then it drops down to a million three, then it drops down to a million two, then it drops down to a million one, then you're down about a million dollars out to twenty thirty-four, which is the end of the twenty years, and then it goes down to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So by having it fall off like that, that gives future councils, you know, the ability, if they had a project, to go out and borrow some money and not have to have their payment go dramatically above where it is today. So we're still keeping that, kind of that tiered approach, where your payments naturally go down over time. So that's, that, that gives you capacity in the future. So in other, I, I think it just makes your point, that, you know, you, you're able to get the eight million dollars now, but you're not necessarily putting future administrations in a bond where they don't have any flexibility to obtain funds if they need to.
Yeah, if things keep rolling like they're rolling now.
Right, right.
And we hope that we can get something else coming, but it could go south.
That's the thing, we talked about the other night, or the, for another day with, with Alan and Scott and Jan going over the finances. Let's say we did borrow 12 or 13 million dollars, and we can't, we can't borrow up to that much. This debt limit will be longer before it starts coming down. By borrowing six, seven, eight million dollars, it will come down quicker. You know, in future administrations, their yearly payments is going to be, you know, a million three, million two, one million down to nine hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand. And if we borrow the max, we're putting future administrations where they can't borrow for a while longer. You know, that's what I'm trying to say. Is Alan, is that not right?
That's right.
And that's how we kind of come up with this figure, which is, I think is good. We, we don't have to borrow that much, or we can borrow more if we need to. Going over with Alan, I think he felt comfortable with what we were doing and was on board with the projects. And Alan, you can address the finances of the city, because you and Jan know it inside and out better than any of us put together, so...
Well, we, the, the reason we came up with the eight million dollar figure was because we could keep the payments the same as they are now till 2023, and then they actually start dropping off. But what that does is we wouldn't have to add any more, count on any more revenues. That's using our current revenues. And so that, that was where we got the, and Wade felt like that without having to add new revenues, new taxes or whatever, we could make the payments we're making now with the current revenues we have now. And that's where, uh, we could borrow up to eight million dollars and still have the same payments that we have now and out of our, the, the same revenues that we have right now, not with any additional, having to add any new taxes or anything.
I think it should be noted, our revenues have been almost the same number for the last four years. We had an uptick last year, but it's been about six point three. And that's given us the surplus of each year of money, which has helped us propel some of the savings past.
The only thing I want, this may be apples and oranges, but they were talking last week to the stock market, we're down. The feds could take action to raise interest rates in general. Would that over the next couple of months affect the bond markets or...
It could, I mean, those are two different rates. You know, they do two things. They have the, um, the Fed funds rate, which is a real short-term rate. And that, that's just where banks, you know, that's where they get their funding source, very short-term rate. And the Fed's been buying, going out in the market, which is a new thing, and buying US Treasury bonds out on the long end. And by buying so many of those bonds, it's driven the rates down. And so that buying of those bonds has really affected the municipal market more than what they do with the Fed funds rate. Because we're selling 20-year bonds, so if the very short-term Fed funds rate moves, that doesn't impact the 20-year number that much. But when they go out and they buy billions and billions of dollars of US Treasuries, that pushes Treasury prices down. And that can affect the municipal rates and the municipal market. So you're, you're at a good point right now in the market to, uh, to lock in, um, long-term rates.
So there wouldn't be too much of time pressure for the timeframe you're looking at to get into the market?
Well, yeah, you just never know. I, I have given up trying to predict the interest rate margins. Rarely am I right, you know? But, um, what I do know is where we are today, and it's good today. I don't know where we'll be a month from now or two months from now or... Honestly, if you'd asked me in January if I thought we'd be where we are today now, I would have said no way in the world. I didn't think they'd be this low. Everybody in the country thought rates were going up. Just this past January, we thought 2014, we were going to see a big hike in rates. And we actually saw rates come back down and surprised everybody. So, you know, who knows, but, um...
But if you voted today, how long before you could lock it in?
You know, uh, we, I think we'd be ready. If the rating agency gets back like they said they would on Friday, we'd be ready to lock in next week. And that'd be the bond sale. We'd be ready to go next week. So we've got everything, everything ready.
My whole thing was trying to find a number to come up with. Like I say, this could, could be less than eight or more than eight. The whole thing was to go ahead and get it out on the table and talk about it. And after talking with Alan and them, we know we don't want to have to have any other additional revenue to cover these bonds. Not for our administration or any other future administration. I don't think they will. But if we borrow as much as we're capable of borrowing, then the next administration that's in your, the next, if they have a project agreed and they two or three million and we're pretty much maxed out, then we're hampering what future generations could be. And that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the more you borrow on that end, what you do is you push out the length of time that you're keeping your payment where it is today. And so that just, you know, reduces flexibility in the future. You know, you have some O nine bonds that you could restructure in the future, but depending on how you do that, that could, could or may or may not be costly depending on where interest rates are. But I think your point is well taken, that the bigger that new money piece is, the further out you push those, keeping the payments at today's level. And that's just going to reduce your flexibility in the future.
Alan, you getting back there?
No, that's pretty much, that's how I've got it figured out too, that...
You were comfortable with each one of these projects and amount of money, you think, is comfortable that, you know, representing our...
I'm, I'm comfortable that with our current revenues, that we could make the bond payments on that eight million dollars in the long, over the next 20 years, yeah.
Scott, have you got anything ahead?
No, sir, I'm, I'm like Alan, I'm looking at where our revenues have been for the last several years. I'm, I'm comfortable that eight million and keeping that payment basically the same for the next few years. And I'm comfortable with that. It doesn't box us in too much in the future. We're still on the debt limit issue, you know, safe there on the most accounts, so I'm, I'm okay with it.
And Alan, our revenues have been fairly steady. Our, Jan, our occupational taxes actually increased some in stores or sales tax. So, I mean, financially, the city's in good shape. It's in very good shape. I mean, I can tell you, it's, for a town our size that has a minimum of two million dollars in bank all the time, that's pretty good. There's a lot of cities that don't.
We're going to make that comment.
So, I mean, if we're called a good management prior, and we just want to be good stewards while we're here and while the next ones are here. You know, we don't want to get us in a bind, because I know what it's like being bind and you have payments you can't make. It's hard, so we don't want to do that to the city. And that's the reason I come up with this number. I could say it could be more or less, but finding something that's comfortable, that's not going to put the city in any kind of pressure.
Same deal, so we're all right now.
Well, your payments right now in this fiscal year are a million seven seventy one. So under this scenario, your payments actually, what we did is we held them to the level without the Colby note. So your payments are actually going to go down about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We, we kept it at that level. So even if you had a hiccup in your revenues, you've still got a hundred and sixty thousand dollar cushion compared to what you pay in last business for a year.
So we got, what, about sixteen, eighteen million?
Yeah, I think that's how it is for we leave it in, it's closer to sixteen.
Sixteen million we owe them.
And you pay off, what, the six hundred sixty thousand dollars in, in, uh, 2018?
Yeah.
Four years?
Eighteen or nineteen.
Which one are you talking about?
The two thousand, two thousand nine.
Fiscal year, no.
Yeah, so...
But all that, you know, we factored all that in. We put the refunding wrapped it around those and wrapped the new money around both those. And we've taken the whole, the city's entire debt portfolio into account when sizing this new deal to keep the current payments about where they are today, actually less than where they are in this fiscal year, but...
Current thing, let's go out to 2023. Twenty-six.
Uh, twenty twenty-one, under the eight million, and it dropped off a little bit, you know, about forty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars after that for the next two years, and then it drops off about another two hundred thousand after that. So it just starts falling off.
But this, once you extend this one, it's for twenty, twenty more years?
Well, it's not, the bond is for 20 years, but because they have other bond issues that fall off, they're not keeping their total payments level for 20 years. The total payments are going to fall off.
Yeah, right.
But this bond issue, in 20 years, they will have paid off this bond issue.
That's what I'm saying, 20 years.
Yeah.
With no current additional revenue unless our, unless everything just went to put, you know...
Right.
Based on now.
Right.
We wouldn't, the sales tax would not have to go up, all right, base tax would not have to go up, property tax would not have to go up. Which is based on revenues we've had for several years. If it sustains itself.
And the, the bond market allowed us to do that with the current rates being low around. And Reed ran all kinds of numbers for us. And, and it just, you know, came up that if we got eight million new money, we could pay it out of the current revenues we have now and keep the payments the same as we have now. Through that, their amortization of numbers that they, they run for us and wrapping around our other bond issues and paying off, uh, principal sooner and sometimes later depending on, on the bond issue at hand and, and what we're paying on other bond issues, these managed to keep those payments soon enough. And then they actually started going down significantly after 2023, even though the bond don't pay off entirely, the new bond, to 2034.
And it drops from nine ninety-seven to one thirty-two, just practically. Oh, what, my point a while ago was, uh, when the bond attorney came, Rob, that it...
Right.
Right, right. That, uh, Scott, he brought, he said we were in perfect shape. He had, uh, very complimentary of the city's finances and how we stood with this and that, uh... He had researched it and found it to be, uh, worth to do now. Did you get that?
We can get a new, uh, two thousand thirteen dollar...
They're working on that now. I don't know how it's going to take in the future. They may, they're hanging...
They don't like, they don't like it a lot.
Hanging Liam's foot on the ground. Reed, what, you just need to know what, what amount we're comfortable with going with. Probably the sooner of that. You got everything ready, except...
We, we don't want you waiting on us, so we got everything ready to go.
Be with what you proposed.
I am too.
Are you okay with this amount?
Just a way in, way in the situation. It's, so we're playing catch-up, and that's no reflection on anybody.
We just need to decide if we want, we want to go with A and B. And as far as the details on all the projects, that'll be worked out later. That's right.
Right.
That, that, that's why I made this, we know some things might be less than what I said, what I proposed. And some things might be a little more. We don't have to know exact numbers. We need to know a number for the bond market. And we'll work with the number we're, we're agreed to borrow for each project. That's my, that's my... That's why I thought if we could do it tonight, that'd be great. I'm comfortable with it, but I won't generally be comfortable with it.
Where did you get this, ten o'clock, sir?
My...
I know, and one about...
What happened to him was Francis and Alan, myself, Jan and Scott met in my office Thursday for about three hours, just trying to hammer this out, come up with a plan. Well, Thursday, I had to leave and go with my daughter to the doctor in Birmingham, so that cut out the rest of Thursday. Friday all day, I was bombarded inside and out this office. So I didn't get a chance to send this to y'all until Saturday night from my living room. But that's when this all come together, so, yeah, you hadn't had time to look at it. We have all talked about some of these projects and some of the cost of the supervisors as well with us tonight. So we knew about what each project was. We just didn't have the total amount of what possible water park or possibly our special, not spec, but more purpose good than us. But we pretty much knew about everything else, or real close. These other items that we added in, yeah, we have not committed a certain amount. And it's just an idea, it's a proposal, and if we can agree on an amount of money, then we can work with that amount of money. That's my thinking.
And Alan, you know, like you were talking the other day, and, and anybody that can look at the budget can see that we've got some assets here that we can do some other smaller things that we want to do uh, and, and take from that, uh, from those monies.
Yeah, we're having a budget through two. We'll have two I figures pretty soon.
Could it be that also that if you have some, the costs and you take the money from general fund or other savings and put it toward some of these projects mentioned?
Excellent.
And that's a good point, because we, we do average sometimes two to two point three million all the time, most all the time.
In general fund?
In the general fund, and we thought about maybe doing some of these projects, maybe two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand and try to keep two million in all the time and use some of this money towards some of these projects. Maybe we can use some of that three hundred thousand, two point three, maybe some of that toward a roof on the rent or the Hamilton Sullivan's house that we desperately need to put some money in to get it finished.
The city owns it.
We own it. You know, there's, there's not going to get it finished if we don't take a ball and run with it. It needs heating and cooling and wiring, you know? That's something, by the time we get through the office, I'd love to see the house finished. We own it, we need to take care of it, we need to get it ready. You know, capital improvement fund was two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Some of that can be used for Hamilton Sullivan's house. I'm getting a sign, a price on a sign, not get a sign, I'm getting a price on a sign to pocket part. I've got one estimate and give another estimate that will be a really nice LED sign that we can operate from the computer with everything up there and not have to pay letters on and off every day. Lots of graphics, like you said, for national and other really nice signs. That's thirty-something thousand dollars. That could be used out of money that we already have. It wouldn't be needing to be in a bond issue. Other projects we can do, we have the flexibility and the money to do them, so, you know...
Well, I think first priority is water and fire protection.
I see.
If you, if you never, um, fed bad water, you know you need... I've, I've had it, I know a lot of other people still got it. And, uh, we need to try to work on that water and the tanks and all, I'd say priority. Same thing with fire.
Well, like you were talking about some of this extra here in the general fund or in capital improvements. Might cook, not cook with the capital improvements, but with the general fund, you got three hundred seventy-three thousand, uh, over there. Yeah, definitely. Maybe put a new roof and maybe we can use that out of the capital improvements, you know, and still have some left over. But, I mean, you could start paying down some of the indebtedness, you know, if we needed to, on, on something. There's many ways that we can use it.
I'd like to see that.
And we could be very, uh, be very frugal with it, so, uh...
Well, we've been very frugal, that's why we're ahead of schedule.
We have.
We could easily spend, spend, spend and not be in budge if we were underbought.
Pretty impressive to me, occupational tax, there's eighty-nine thousand business licenses, alcohol sales. And you saw tonight what we were able to give the schools and so, and, and the CDs, what they, Jan, is that close to around two hundred and seventy-ish, something like that thousand in CDs. So I think we're in excellent shape for the size that we are. And hopefully we've got more jobs coming.
Reed, when you came the first night, you were with Dale McCrillis. What is your affiliation with personal...
What is your affiliation with First National?
Well, First National was hired as a financial advisor on the transaction, so they help with the rating process, they help with the preparation of official statement, they reviewed all the schedules, and that's what they do. They're not affiliated with us as much as they are hired by the city as a financial advisor, not unlike Alan, I guess, as a financial consultant. First National Bank is registered as a municipal advisor under the Securities Exchange Commission.
How do we pay them, Reed? Do you go to bond?
Yes, they're paid a fee out of the bond issue.
Well, I'm ready to wrap this up. I appreciate everyone staying an extra couple of hours and definitely thank you, Reed, for showing you got a three-hour drive home.
Yeah, that's all right.
Without your guidance and advice, you know, we'd be lost.
Well, no, I'm happy to be here, thank you for that.
Does counsel feel comfortable, no approving date meeting tonight? Or you want to think about adding, taking away, less or more? I'd like to wrap it up tonight if we can, but if you're not comfortable with it, that's fine anyway. I'll make a motion to go to date meeting.
Did you say you made a motion to go back to regular meeting? I can't hear, I can't hear over here, but you are going to have to make a, you are going to have to vote and go back to register.
I'll make that motion in there. Is there a second to go back into regular session? All in favor, say aye. And we're back in the regular session now.
Yeah, you can do that, Ryan.
I'm going to make a motion and go ahead and bid that meeting. Is there a second?
I second.
Jan, you have a discussion?
I just wish to, but it's not a little bit earlier. But that has been in on the Thursday meeting.
I apologize, Tim, I mean, I, I really do.
I was a vote.
I was too.
Did you have a vote?
And we're discussing.
It's getting late, I'm sorry.
We got a motion to second his, on favor, sir.
I abstain because First National will be paid through the bond, and my daddy sits on the bank board.
I vote double on the eight million, because I believe that's too much money to be borrowing right now.
All in favor, say aye. And Tammy, I'm staying, Tim votes no.
Okay, thank you.
Mostly based on the date meeting, it's not the project, it's...
No, it's just a vital amount of money.
I agree, okay, thank you.
We're getting, sitting too big of a desk.
Is there...
There's a lot of different ways.
I should turn to the chair.
No, she's going to turn. I don't like that motion, but is there a second?
Who's second?
Greg.
Great, okay.
Everybody. All in favor, say aye.
We're going to, see you back there.